This is the Baltimore City Council Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. We're here to hear Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero four zero R, "Increased Transparency About Police Seized Property," introduced by Councilman Stokes. Before we get started, a couple of housekeeping items. Number one, this hearing is being televised on Charm TV. If you are going to be testifying, when you get up, I ask that you speak into the microphone. I may interrupt you if you are not speaking into the microphone, just to politely remind you to speak into the microphone. Number two, if you have a cellphone, please turn that to off, mute, vibrate, anything that does not include making noise. That rule applies to me first?
Yeah. Demonstrate what they sound like.
Lead by example, right? All right, off. Out of respect for everyone else, and I apologize for that, we are going to start off with brief introductions. First, to my right, we're joined by Council President Bernard C. Jack Young; to his immediate right, Councilman Leon Pinkett; to his right, Councilwoman Sharon Green Milton of the Sixth District, Vice President of the City Council; to my immediate left, Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District; to his left, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark of the Fourteenth District, Vice Chair of the Committee; to her left, Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth District; Councilman John Bullock from the Ninth District; Councilman Ed Risinger from the Tenth District; Councilman Brandon Stokes from the Second District; Baby Ray; to my immediate right, we have DePaul Nibber, Staff to the Committee; to his right, we have Karik Hunts from the Council President's Office; behind her, Rebecca Tab, Counsel to the City Council; and of course, Karan Banks representing Mayor Catherine Pugh. Councilman Brandon Scott, I apologize. And we have Councilwoman Shannon Sneed from the Thirteenth District with us. Before we begin, I'm going to pass it off to Councilman Robert Stokes for some opening comments, and then we'll get started with agency testimony.
There's a tab in the Baltimore City Police website that reads transparency. In the opening paragraph on that transparency tab describes compliance, accountability, and external affairs division. The division is tasked with implementing reforms resulting from the DOJ consent decree in a manner that, one, improves working conditions for police officers; two, increase public safety for communities; and, three, strengthens the relationship between law enforcement and citizens. Tonight's hearing is focused on the last point, strengthening the relationship between the police and Baltimore City residents. How do we do that? Transparency and trust must go hand in hand, and they are the foundation of a good relationship. The citizens of this great city want the police to be proactive and share vital information. They want an atmosphere that supports open, frequent, and honest dialogue about what will affect their daily lives. They also want and deserve the opportunity to participate in shaping and improving the system. Years, if not decades, of mistrust have eaten away at the soul of the city. One way we can start to rebuild the trust is transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Just by a quick show of hands, who's here to provide public testimony? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to start off with testimony from the Baltimore Police Department. Take it away, please. And if you could say your name and position, as well as everyone else that's with you from the agency.
My name is Chief Stephen Odell. I'm with the Baltimore Police Department. And to my right is Director Kendall Jaeger. He's also from the Police Department. He's the over Crime Scene Sciences and Evidence Control Unit. And to his right is Sergeant Warren from the, which unit is it now?
Dirt bike.
Dirt bike task force. And behind me is Ms. Denise Caldwell, Deputy Director in the Crime Scene Sciences Evidence Unit. I'm here representing the crime lab and evidence.
Mic up.
Crime lab and evidence. And in that, I have, under my span of control, the forensic laboratory, crime scene sciences, evidence, body worn cameras, HR, fiscal, and asset management, and a number of other units as well. All right.
Do you guys have a presentation or anything?
Not a presentation, per se, not a PowerPoint. But in terms of the bill, what I'd like to say is that we fully support it. The transparency factor is equally, is very important to us. We were lucky enough to have Councilman Stokes visit the evidence unit. He walked through the layers in the basement, as well as the warehouse, to get a feel for the breadth of the issue. And we appreciate that. We haven't ever had a council member that's walked through, that I'm aware of, at least not since I've worked here as a, yeah, to the evidence unit. That was actually pretty special. So on top of that, I should make it clear that, for those here, that I'm a civilian as well. The majority of my command is also civilian with respect to the majority of the unit. Evidence control is, in fact, sworn, in its majority at this moment. So beyond that, I would say I think the core issues of the bill are an audit, a five-year audit of property, and an accountability piece that involves civilian representation on evidence destruction. Is that correct?
So the bill calls for the Police Department to provide it with a full accounting of all seized guns, drugs, dirt bikes, and cash over the past five years, along with a thorough explanation of how this material was disposed of, how long the disposal process typically takes, and what the best way, what are the best ways to include community representatives in that process?
Okay. So the current destruction process, since I know that's part of this focus, involves representation from the Evidence Control Unit, Internal Affairs, Witnesses of Destruction, SWAT accompanies and Witnesses of Destruction.
So let's take a step back, because I'm not sure. I mean, there's no presentation, which is fine, but this is asking for several pieces of information. And my understanding from my colleague is that, you know, you guys had discussed presenting one year worth of information. So let's just step through each of these items. Do we have the full accounting of these items with us today?
I have the numbers, in terms of full. So I know what the number is. I do not have what represents every one of those numbers.
Yeah, I'm not asking for the serial number off of, you know, every item. So let's start with seized guns. What's the period of time in the number?
So in 2017, it was eighteen hundred and ninety-eight seized guns. And I have the numbers, the core number for each year, for the five years.
Okay, yeah, can you go through each of the five years?
Sure. Yep. So total guns, in 2013, is nineteen sixty; 2014, twenty forty-eight; 2015, eighteen fifty; 2016, twenty fifty-eight; and 2017, eighteen ninety-eight.
So it's hovering right around two thousand, plus or minus?
Yeah.
What you have in writing, is that something you can provide to the committee in writing so that we can get that in the bill file?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you could go into the drugs piece of it?
All right, so CDS submissions, in 2013, there were twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four; in 2014, there were eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty; in 2015, there were eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two; in 2016, there was twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine; and in 2017, there were thirteen thousand, seven hundred.
So that was, on average, about twenty thousand the first two years, and then the last three years, it was about twelve or thirteen thousand?
Correct.
Okay. And then dirt bikes?
And the dirt bike task force was established in the summer of sixteen, and since then there's been just over four hundred seizures. About, four oh three, is that correct? Yes, four oh three.
Plus or minus two hundred a year, sixteen and seventeen?
Yeah, approximately.
And cash?
In cash, they were, and this is money submissions, dollar amount. Money submissions is a different factor. I brought the number of submissions. So there were sixteen, or six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six submissions for money in thirteen; five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three submissions in fourteen; four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight submissions in fifteen; four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six submissions in sixteen; four thousand, seven hundred and two submissions in seventeen. And I do have a dollar amount for seventeen. And that's just over two million, two million, three hundred, eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars in the vault.
All right, and can we next talk about thorough explanation of how the material was disposed of?
So the money's not destroyed, so money is deposited into the bank. Every week, there's a money deposit Dunbar picks up. So that's how money is disposed of, quote unquote. It's in the bank. It can be requested to be returned if legally, it all goes through legal at that point, like it's not in evidence control any longer. So that's a city process in terms of that. Maybe a defendant claims is, that it was illegally seized, or there's some legal issue, they will request the money to be returned, it goes through legal, and then the city writes a check.
So do we know the total sum of those cash seizures by year over that five-year period?
Just the last year, 2017, is the only one I actually have for the cash amount.
What was that again?
Two million, three hundred, eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
And do you estimate that it was a similar figure for the previous four years?
It's been going down, but it was around two million, from what I understand, the last couple of years. And so we have returned, in 2017, I have a return number, they returned, or we returned a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for various reasons.
Council President?
Thank you. Two point three million in fiscal seventeen, and I know you just recently started. We need to get from the Police Department, for each year, how much money that was, because we're looking to see if we can have most of this money that's not reclaimed because of some legal issue. We want to see how we can get this money allocated to programs in the community to fight crime.
Yes, sir. So we'll, we do get a dollar amount, it's all deposited, so we can, I can get you the dollar figures.
Okay. Because, you know, community's been crying about, you know, the police seizing money, and they don't know what's happening with the money. Sometime on the board of estimate, we see where it's travel, and it's a forfeiture money. I would prefer that that money go to communities.
Do you have a total dollar amount that's currently in that account, total balance?
No, sir. I can get it for you, but I don't know.
Yeah, can you provide that in writing to the committee?
Yeah.
DePaul, make sure that we get that as follow-up. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You answered a lot of these questions already, but I guess I did have a quick follow-up about the, I know you were going to say you're going to send the committee information on how much money is in the account.
Correct.
What is the actual policy for the use of those funds? Does that go to the police budget? Does that go to the general fund? Does it sit in this account for perpetuity? What is the actual policy and procedure, and where would that be found from a legal statute as to how this money is supposed to be used?
Do you want to answer that?
Good evening. Those funds are actually deposited into three separate accounts. We have a...
Can you pull the mic up, please, sir? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Director Kendall Jaeger. Those funds are deposited into three separate accounts. We have an account for gambling, an account for specials, and an account for narcotic. Once it's deposited into those accounts, those accounts have been in existence for longer than we've, than I've been at ECU, than the staff at ECU has been there. So I don't know what the balance of those accounts is, and those accounts, my understanding is, go to the general fund, but they're monitored by, Amanda D., fiscal?
So I should make it clear, since, I mean, I can understand, the, we don't, that we don't monitor, that's not our account to monitor. Like after evidence control deposits it, we're not, we're not into the...
What agency monitors the funds?
The city, finance.
The city finance.
Yeah. So you're, like, we don't pull from that account, that it comes back to us from finance?
So the funds are deposited into three separate accounts, depending on the type of case?
Correct.
Finance department monitors the funds, and then you said they send it back to the department?
No, no, they, if it's requested that that money needs to be returned, they write a check back to the individuals, and the money for, it comes back to the department, potentially in asset forfeiture spending, which is, you know, monitored either through state or federal. They both have slightly different processes.
So same, I guess the same question would apply, or I'd have the same question for vehicles, dirt bikes, that kind of thing. If the dirt bikes stay in the lot in perpetuity, are they, or are they sold at some point? And if so, is this the same process? What's the process for that, for the value of assets, vehicles, that are connected to drug cases, or trafficking cases, or gambling cases? Where does the, where does the value of those assets go after being seized?
To the city. So they don't come back to the Police Department. Like, there's nothing that I'm aware of, and I'm still, to some degree, learning some of this, but the value of what's sold doesn't come back to, like, a fund for the Police Department, it comes back to the city, who then allocates those funds as they deem fit. And that would be a BBMR question as to, a budget question as to where they exactly go.
Okay. Mr. Chair, would we be able to do a follow-up with finance? Because I think the public sort of deserves to know, and an audit of where these ones are going to, what types of things that they're going, and I don't think anyone's here from finance to...
Absolutely. I just asked Karan Banks from the mayor's office to go grab someone from finance. I'm not sure why someone's not here, but if they're not here, we will get something in writing.
Okay. All right, and my last question, Mr. Chair, until we get finance here. So I have a particular interest in the connection with human trafficking cases, in particular, I'm co-chair of the Baltimore City Trafficking, Human Trafficking Task Force, and this issue has come up in some of our meetings with law enforcement. How is it determined when a case is opened, is it a drug case, is it a trafficking case? And if so, how does it, can you explain that process a little bit about the determination? So you mentioned, like, gambling, you mentioned three different accounts. How do we know if there's a gambling ring that is also selling drugs that may have dirt bikes? How does that delineation, how is that delineation made by the department?
All right, so that's, Dean?
That determination isn't made by personnel at ECU, that's made by the arresting or the submitting officer. So that typically gambling funds are when they, when they arrest somebody on the street corner for gambling. It's not, it's not a gambling ring that I'm aware of, or at least I've not been informed of any of that. Narcotics are if they arrest somebody and they've got, and they believe that the money is evidence of that crime or part of that crime, then that's, that's how it's submitted to ECU. So it's submitted as money with narcotics. That's where the delineation in the accounts come from. So we have special, we have narcotics, and we have gambling. And special is anything other than narcotics or gambling.
Okay.
So, I mean, if it helps at all, too, to clear it up, you know, from the bill's perspective, and as I understood it coming here to testify, evidence control is storage. Beyond that, you're, you would be getting into a lot of other pieces of the department that would likely need other testimony that they would need to be informed of. So if you ask me questions, so to speak, about how it's stored in ECU, if it is, or what that process is when it's in storage, that's us. But beyond that, it's the officers that come in that code that, and we take it as is. They write them in, they type them in the computer, what, how they classify it, what type of crime it is, and so forth.
So how many, I guess I'll ask you a question, and I'll stop here on storage, because I know that was why we were here. So how many officers have access to guns that are stored? And how often are the number of, the number and types of weapons audited by the department?
The last full audit of firearms was done approximately three years ago, four years ago, excuse me, when, the last full audit was done approximately four years ago, whenever the new sergeant and lieutenant came in. Currently, access to the firearms vault is three people. That's the officer in charge of the vault, the sergeant, and the lieutenant in evidence control.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll stop for now, I know there's others that have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, before I ask some other questions, I would just ask that, when you're providing the information to the chairs to provide to the rest of the committee, if you could have that, those, the numbers of things seized, also broken down by district per year, too? So the amount of dollars, you know, dirt bikes, guns, whatever, we would like to see that in police district fashion, as well as in its totality. And I guess my next question, and Mr. Chair, I don't know if finance will be joining us to, joining the discussion today about finances, but in recent years, actually, this has been an item that the Council President and I have pressed previous police commissioners on, asking about the usage of asset forfeiture funds, and it was told to us then, the last time in 2012, that those dollars can only be used for public safety usage. Is that still the case today?
That's how I understand it, yes, sir.
So, but what I think that my colleagues and I are, and it's not for you, Chief, this is more from Mr. Banks, are trying to impress upon the administration is that those dollars for public safety don't always mean it has to go back to the Police Department, right? We're going to be looking for money for safe streets. We have asset forfeiture money that maybe we could use it for. Those are the kind of things that I think that we have to look at when we're talking about trying to change the dynamics around how we're doing public safety in Baltimore. But also, when you, when you think about what that means in real life, if we're taking that money and investing it back into people in their neighborhood to make it safer, it's going to carry a lot of weight with people on the street. So I think it's something for all of us to think about. But Chief, I almost called you director, congratulations again.
Thanks.
Chief, just another follow-up. So you said that only three people have the access, right, to the guns?
Right.
Can you explain why we haven't done an audit over the last, since four years ago? Is there a reason for that? Is there some kind of protocol, state or federal, that says that, you know, Police Department should be doing that, those checks and audits on a routine basis, or is it, are we out of step with other jurisdictions across the country?
So the, to go back just a little bit, in regards to the asset forfeiture, there's going to be two different rule sets that'll have to be investigated, one for federal, one for state.
Yeah.
In respect to the audits, there's nothing in statute. What I'm working towards in the bigger vision for it is to be accredited, like the crime lab is, which is how this came under my command. So this has been separated from the laboratory for a decade, I think. When I came onboard, it was, it was part of, strangely enough, Record Management Services, Service 632. So this last year, it came under my command, not seventeen, but sixteen, still operating in seventeen. But in sixteen, it came under my command, and the purpose of that, and the grander vision of that, is to become accredited, at which point audits would be required. Audits, inspections, those are different, they mean different things. So when we do things like drug burns and stuff, there's inspections. When we do gun burns, there's inspections. So what the director speaks of in terms of an audit would be a full-scale, possibly third-party coming in to do, you know, an actual complete scrub-down of everything there. And that's what we hope for, sort of, out of this, is we hope that we can partner and bring that in here, so that we can move towards an accredited Evidence Control Unit that's attached to our accredited crime laboratory. And what we look for in terms of that, so we have done some scoping to try to figure out, like, the cost of that, and we're looking at around five hundred thousand, or a little bit under, to do such thing. And we wouldn't want to do that with our current employees in there, in Evidence Control, because we want a third-party, independent audit of that. And right now, and quite honestly as well, the staffing in Evidence Control, from how I understand it before I took it over, had dropped from in the sixties down to about seventeen. So that's causing some of the, you know, when you ask, and the Councilman knows from walking around, I'm sure he didn't see very many people. That's something that has to be worked on.
I think that, Mr. President, with this being the first day to General Assembly, this may be something that we should take up with our state counterparts as well. My last question for now, Chief, is, we still, with both guns and dirt bikes, we melt those down, correct?
The guns, for sure. The dirt bikes, I believe, are sold.
Resold, and they're sold in Virginia?
That I don't know.
You don't know?
Sorry. Do you know where, do you know where they're sold? It's, yeah, it's dirt bike, it's sold by a third party, so I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Can we, is it, can we track with the vendor to see where they're selling, where they're reselling their property? I think that we should, we should definitely know that if we don't.
And before any, you know, to be clear, too, before anything is sold, letters are sent to...
The property owners.
Right. So they, and we keep records of that.
They're stored in my district, I see them all the time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Risinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of my, number of my questions have already been questioned, but I do want to echo and also piggyback on my colleagues, that because of what's been happening, I think that we're really looking at accountability and transparency. And what I recommend to the President and to the Budget Chair and to my colleagues, that you need to, your department, regards to the accountability and transparency and audit, is to come in front of the Budget Appropriation Committee, so we can see where the money's being spent, Mr. Chairman, and not just go through a resolution. Because when, you know, when we're asking, like, the question about the dirt bikes, but they're taking more off the street, but you're saying a third party, I think we have, we shouldn't know, because the Police Department comes in front of the Council for more resources, money for overtime, and I think we deserve the courtesy and respect, so we can communicate with our community as a whole, what is happening within the Police Department. So I just, I just think that we should add this, your department, in regards to the audit, and the guns and the dirt bikes and all, should be part of the budget operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think most of my questions have been asked also, but I want to make certain that we also get information, and I apologize if Councilman Burnett already asked this, on the dollar amount that's returned each year, do you have that?
Not in front of me. I know the amount returned in seventeen.
What was the amount returned?
One hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight.
So...
It doesn't mean it was seized in seventeen.
Right, no, I understand. But, I mean, right, but, I mean, in, right, in 2017, we had about two point four million collected, but we only returned, and I know it wasn't from that year, but we only returned a hundred and fifty thousand. That's a pretty good percentage that we're retaining in that bank account somewhere. You mentioned gun burn. Over the same period, 2013 to 17, it looks like we seized about ten thousand guns over that five-year period. Can you describe for us, in a little bit more detail, what, you know, how we dispose of the guns? And I know you mentioned that, you know, some of them get, do all of them get melted down? Did we melt down ten thousand guns over five years?
No, no, not at all. So the, in order to even begin that process, the property, or the evidence in this case, has to be released, has to have a disposition from the investigating officer. So there's, there's still over three million pieces of evidence that we maintain because of various reasons, either we have to by statute, or an officer investigator hasn't released that evidence to be destroyed or returned to owner, or any other number of reasons similar to that. So we don't burn or destroy nearly the amount we typically take in, it'd be very unusual. So those guns are still, many of them are still in evidence control. But that process, though, involves the officer releasing that, or the investigator releasing that, us sending a letter. If we get a response, then going through that legal process of returning that weapon, doing a background check, and that happens, and then we return, they come in, they have to pick it up, or after ninety days, it will be then slated to be destroyed, which then it's meltdown.
And so are we practicing the same audit process for guns? And so, are, are we practicing the same audit process for guns as we do for cash?
In terms of how that works? Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, because we, we aren't auditing the cash, so are we not auditing the guns also?
And what do you mean in that respect?
Well, I mean, we, like, we haven't audited the cash in about four years. Are we saying that?
Well, it's audited, that, it's, it's being deposited, so by virtue of that, I think probably what you're asking, i- it is being audited in that respect. Right, so somebody has to go, there's a ledger kept, somebody has to go through the dollars of deposit, the bank says they have it, we have an amount that we say we received, the bank says that we received the same amount, like, by virtue, that, that's a natural audit.
I guess what I'm getting to, so do, annually, do we check to make certain that the, the right amount of guns are in our possession as, 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 as we have seized, or they, or returned, or that we, that we make certain that some, that these guns aren't disappearing, or finding their way back on the street? That's, that's pretty much what I'm getting to. How, how are we making certain that, that the guns aren't getting back on the street?
All right, so we know that, we have limit, we limit access, that's one way. We have the witnesses for the burns, and multiple of them, and since I've been in charge, that includes civilians, civilians that work for me in, in the crime lab, so they attend the, the burn. That's, that's another mechanism, along with multiple other entities, all independently managed. So, you got, I, Internal Affairs is under one commander, the crime lab's under another commander, and SWAT's under another commander. So, it's three different parts of the department, all that run separate from one another in that respect. So, that's how we ensure during the burn that things do not go missing. In terms of limited access, and we haven't, in, in terms of going through the criminal proceedings that occur with the majority or many of these, these impounds, we haven't have an instance yet, that I'm aware of, at least not since I've been in charge, where we've had missing items for that process.
So, so like, who is responsible for, for going back and counting the number of guns that we have existing and making certain it matches up with the number that's supposed to be there?
We do, no, no, that's not happening.
Then how do we know?
We only know from the, the, when you look at the, the incoming guns?
Mm-hmm.
And we look at our outgoing guns, and the best that we can do is match up that, you know, there should be this many left.
Because we have, but we just assume it because we never count it?
Right, if you, we need to do, if we're going to do that, that's the audit part that I'm talking about. We need to have a full-scale, third-party audit, like those, that takes, I just did one for rape kits as a good example, right? Because last year, there was a lot of legislation in Annapolis about rape kits. The only way for me to get that number was I had to pull, I think, around 10 people down, and they had to go through and hand-count everything. That happened, and that took quite some time. And that was for something that's all in one area of, of evidence control. So, that's a, that, you know, that process that you're talking about is, would be and is incredibly labor-intensive. It needs to be done.
Right.
But we just got to understand that there's only less than 20 people assigned to this unit, and they all, they don't have access even to the areas that they would need to, to do, to do that.
I mean, you're right, it's, it's extremely labor-intensive, but you would think that it would be worthwhile to, to have the certainty that guns, that, that the police are, and we're investing such an effort to get off the streets, and are not in any way getting back.
Okay, so, informally, there would be another mechanism. So, we use what's called NIB, National Integrated Ballistic Identification Network, right? So, every, every gun that we get, we trace, and we also put into the database. So, if any gun, you know, if there's any independent way to determine whether this is happening, any gun that, that we get, that we come in, we test, fire, and enter. We have never had a match to one of our own guns, in terms of, like, evidence.
So, can I just ask quick? So, to your knowledge, there's never been an incident where a gun that was seized by the police was used again, was back on the street using another crime?
Not in terms of it disappearing from ECU. Now, if we, if we rightfully return to customer and it ends up back on the street or gets stolen, that's a different story.
Okay.
But in terms of, like, getting guns in, they're all running the database, separate from all of this other talk, it's running the database.
Okay.
And they, they've never hit against each other.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
And that's every gun.
Is, is there a reason we can't just have a video of, this is gun with serial number 1652, it's a 9-millimeter dark-colored Beretta, tossing it in the oven? Here's the next gun, serial number, make, model, tossing it in the oven, then there would be no, I mean, is that, I don't mean to dumb it down, but...
To a degree. I think now with the body-worn cameras, our guys are wearing, because we do have SWAT going, they have the cameras on, so I think that's one possibility. I don't know if it'd be that.
No, I'm just saying, as a, as a internal control, you just have a video of you burning down the guns.
It's cost ineffective? I mean, and, that's cost-effective, but I don't see why not.
Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, my question's a little bit different than some of the previous ones. I was wondering if you could just kind of walk us through the process for seized narcotics? I mean, what happens? What's that protocol?
So, the, the narcotics come in, you see controlled dangerous substances come in, they go into a mailbox after they've been taken in by the officer who photographs them and enters it into what's called LAMS, a Laboratory Information Management System. It comes upstairs to the crime lab at this time, and it waits for analysis. At some point, it's analyzed, if it's required for court, it makes its way back down to ECU where it is stored and then eventually destroyed. We have to wait for both officer or investigator disposition, as I've mentioned, but also usually sign-off from the state's attorney. So, we are quite a ways away from catching up on our drug burns. Everybody has to agree to let us burn it.
And then just really quickly, I know there've been some, some challenges in the past. What kind of changes have you made to sort of, to avoid having some of those drugs going back on the streets or any sort of shenanigans?
Well, so far, again, it's not something I'm aware of has happened, even in the past. I know it's not happening over the last couple of years, a year and a half, but in the past, I'm not aware of that happening. Again, it's limited access. It has two people, is it two now? Two with, two with access to that room. There are cameras that monitor, they're bagging in and out, and any burn, there's two, two other parts of this, too. There, any burn that's done is inspected and matched up. So, again, sort of like an audit, it's an audit process, I just don't think it's the audit, maybe everybody's talking about an audit is full-scale, but in that process, they inspect everything being burned, and then we randomly test the controlled substances to make sure that they haven't been changed.
How do we document that?
The testing's done with reports, so we write reports, just like we do for regular crime.
Can we see some reports?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Do we, we'd like some sample reports on dirt bikes, on cash, and on CDS?
Well, definitely on CDS. What kind of report on dirt bikes and cash?
So, for example, for the dirt bike, you're disposing of the dirt bike to a third-party vendor that is in turn selling that dirt bike to a private entity or individual? So, there has to be some paper trail of, from when BPD disposes of said dirt bike to it gets in the hands of another entity. And what was the other one? Guns? Guns? Do we, are we documenting guns getting melted down?
Yeah, so we have documentation of that. And in terms of the report, I just meant like the lab report or the random analysis was different than the other two things, but...
Well, there's got to be a, a report that controls the process, that documents.
Yes, we do.
So, again, for, for Councilman Bullock's question, there's, there's a burn of narcotics, there's, there's got to be a paper trail that documents that. I mean, I think that's at the heart of what we're trying to get at today is, is, and I don't think anyone's trying to say that you're not doing the things that you're saying with, with these illicit items. I think what we're saying is we want to understand what it is that you're doing, and we want to see document, I'm sorry, I used to be an auditor, so I'm just going to put my auditor hat on, we want to see documentation of what it is that you're doing with these things.
I understand.
We want to see proof of it. So, if you took 141 guns off the street, we'd like to see a spreadsheet or a report or something that says, these are the 141 guns that were taken off the street, here's exactly what we did. We burned 130 of them, and 11 people came back and rightfully and legally claimed those guns, and they were given their guns, and they...
So, you'd like a sample of that, like a sample set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman, is it?
And I feel, I feel you.
Is that, oh, but is that, is everyone good with that request?
What was, repeat that?
The, the request is to, to see a, a sample and not just one.
Correct.
Some, some level of detail for guns being melted, CDS being melted, and dirt bikes being disposed of externally, to have documentation showing the...
How it works.
The internal controls in, in place, and that, you know, we started with five guns, and three of those got melted, and two of those were rightfully and legally claimed by a private individual. So, we started with the five, three were burned, two were given back, so we, we know that everything's being accounted for. I think that's what the, what the councilman was looking for in the...
We can do that.
In the intent.
I feel you on the audit. I'm a lead ISO assessor, so I get it. I totally know what you mean.
Appreciate it. Councilwoman Clark?
Thanks, Chief. Okay, so I, I'd like to kind of leap to the end and come backwards on it a little bit, if I could.
Okay.
So, one of the things this resolution's saying is that it would be advisable to have, like, a community-based oversight group that works with the police department to basically provide the community verification that all the different disposal methods are being practiced, and that, that works with the police to be witnesses, frankly, on behalf of the general public. So, that, that was in the resolution. What is the Baltimore Police, I have a couple of other questions that follow that, but that's kind of what we're looking for here, is to the door to that, constituting that kind of oversight in, in an accountable, community-based group.
Well, you'll get no argument from me. So, we're good to go.
So, the police department would welcome that and would...
Yes, ma'am.
Help us to, along with the mayor's office, to figure out what the, how that group is constituted, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am. All we, all we do is a limited criminal background check on anybody attending, and we're good to, we're good to go.
All right, well, that's good.
And any council members, too.
We can get that done fast. I would imagine everybody's, I would think.
When's our next burn?
Now, then secondly, given that, I, I know it's been spoken about, but let me just ask the question. What, who determines the disposition of the four categories of seized articles that we're talking about? So, you have guns?
Mm-hmm.
You have drugs, you have cash, you have dirt bikes. So, I believe it's the law how guns, well, I don't know. Tell me, how do, who determines, what determines how guns are disposed of, that are seized after they've gone through the, you know, the process of perhaps returning them to rightful owners, going to court, yada yah? How, how are the guns, who determine, what determines how the guns are disposed? A law?
Policy.
It's a policy?
Policy is, it drives that, that process, and...
And whose policy is it?
Baltimore Police Department's policy.
Okay, so...
There's some aspects that law is involved in, of course. I mean, in terms of how we have to do, in order to return guns to owners, there's, you have to do background checks, you have to do certain things, but our policy includes those things in that process.
But your policy is the burn, is the burn? That's police policy?
Yeah, we...
Well, yeah, but I'm going to go through all four, and then you can, if I could.
So, the...
All right, so, what I'm going to do is this, I'm going to ask you that same question for each of these categories, because I think they're different. So, basically, you've got some legal requirements in terms of disposition, or preparation for disposition of what's left, and then really, it's a matter of police department policy, how you literally dispose.
Correct.
So, then you've got drugs. What determines how they are disposed of? I'm clear, this is after the cases are over, life is going on, there's a bunch of drugs that are now...
Analyzed and waiting.
And you don't need them anymore.
Right.
What, who, what determines how they're disposed?
The very fact that they were analyzed and the case has been dispositioned, the case is over. So, once that happens, then they're prepared to be burned.
So, they get burned?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, drugs are burned.
And, and is that a policy or a law?
Policy.
Okay, so that's a police department policy?
Yeah, I'm not sure of anybody else who does it any other way, but it's always burned.
But somehow, that's what happens?
Mm-hmm.
So, then what about dirt bikes? I think I know, but say, would you say it one more time?
Sold.
Sold? Now, that's a whole...
Now, they could be, they could be, I suppose they could be melted down, smeltered, but I don't think that's happening.
Well, who decides?
There are dispositions from, that come from the investigators. So, once the case is over, they will say, this case is over, the evidence is available for disposition, and it can be either, it could be sold, which I assume if it's in sellable condition, and if it's not, then it can be melted, or it could be trash-heaved, there's probably a few different ways that that could happen.
Well, and so...
And that's after trying to find the owner and returning it, if that's applicable.
So, there's a whole bunch of things there, and some of them could bring the dirt bikes right back onto the streets where they came from. I mean, I'm not, I'm just trying to find out, and last but not least, I know we've talked about money.
Mm-hmm.
So, who, when all is said and done, and there's money left over, how often does that happen? In other words, it's been three years since an audit, so what, four, oh, four years since an audit?
For a general property audit of ECU, not, not money. Money is done every week. That's, we got to be very clear about each of these items. Money is done every, is deposited every week, and as a result of that deposit, there's a natural audit that occurs because you have a receipt coming in, and you have one being deposited, and they have to match up.
I, I hear you. I'm talking about how it comes out.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, I mean, basically, I'm not trying to, because that's my last category, somebody determines, there's things that determine how that, what happens with that money. Are those things laws?
Many of them.
And are there policies in the police department?
Well, with, once the money's deposited, it, we can't have a policy about how it's going to be spent, because we, it's not a police department decision, per se.
So, in other words, you say, when you put that, oh, I, I guess that's what you said before, once the money goes in the account, it's, it doesn't, it's out of the police department?
Right, it's got to meet statutory requirements to be considered asset forfeiture at that point, and, and there, and that's, there's a lot of laws revolving on, around how that works.
But sometimes it is, and if it's asset forfeiture, is it still with the police?
No, it's in a separate account, and it's either going to be federally marked, state marked, federally or state marked, and they both are used differently, and can be used differently. They have different laws.
So, you've got a lot of different rules and regulations, but somehow, somebody's got money left over, and whether it's going into the general fund or not is somebody's determining. Okay, so what I'm, when, we don't know this.
Right, but in terms of ECU, it's not, there's no money left over in my unit, per se.
So, basically, when you're saying that the police department certainly is happy to have an oversight group that's community-based?
Mm-hmm.
They got a lot of running around to do.
The community group, or...
Yeah, I mean, because you've got a lot, you've got four categories with four different criteria for disposal, and, and they're, so, basically, I, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like a profile to the committee of what is, what's determining disposal? And how much is, of that is for each category? For each category, how do you figure it out? Okay, I'm almost done. That's what we would like to see in writing, so that it would be like a guide for people who are interested in participating in this co, community watchdog oversight partnership group, and what that entails, and maybe, should it be four groups? Who knows? But that, I hope, Mr. Chairman, we could ask for...
Yes, ma'am.
And it comes back to us for perhaps getting down to the formation of the oversight committee. Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome, ma'am. You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We're going to...we do have a couple other questions from the council. Out of respect for everyone that's here from the public, we're going to jump into public testimony. We will then entertain those additional questions from the council. We are not going to be voting on this tonight. We will be recessing, because there's obviously more information that the council needs. We'd like to have a more extensive dialogue with the Department of Finance and the Department of Law present, as well as more senior officials from the Baltimore Police Department. I am going to go through everyone who has signed in to testify, starting with Bill Gooden. Is Bill Gooden here? How you doing, sir?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm going to ask that everyone try and keep their testimony to three minutes, out of respect for the other folks that are looking to testify. Mr. Gooden, please take it away, sir.
Well, it's really going to be hard to keep it to three minutes, but first of all, let me just thank Councilman Stokes for having his hearing, and of course, thanking all the citizens that came out to hear this. First of all, I just want to say this. I disagree with a lot of what we just said. You know, if any of you taking money to the bank, would you just take your money to the bank with nobody...with no oversight, just the banker making sure that your money is okay? I'm just asking, because that's what we asking in terms of this. We say we trusting the police department to take all this stuff off the street, irregardless to the corruption that we know that's happening in the police department, but we believe that they not going to mess with this money nor drugs. Now, this guy says there's just three people that have access to the evidence room. Did I hear that? All right, I just want to ask this. And please, you know, that's one good thing about technology. You go on the internet and just get so much information. But here in Baltimore, June 2014, drugs go missing from Baltimore Police Evidence Room.
I think that's Baltimore County.
No, 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 no. Uh-uh. Baltimore Police. I'm not talking about Baltimore...now, if you want to talk about Baltimore County, June 26, 2014, a Baltimore County cadet stole over $100,000 in cash, as well as drugs. Now, I'm saying, how do a cadet, who's not even the police, get access to the evidence room? You know, I'm saying, look, you know, when we talking about the drugs and the weapons and the cash, then in my opinion, city council, you know, and there's no indictment of nobody, should be ashamed of themselves, because y'all should want accountability over the police department. They cannot...hey, they have police auctions, right? You go to police auction, and you buy cars and diamond rings and jewelry.
Mr. Gooden, I have to ask that you address the council and witnesses.
I am addressing the council, sir, but I'm saying, you know, but when we're going to talk about it, then, you know, you can't eliminate certain things and just try to cover it up with other things. You see what I'm saying? I mean, the reason you don't sell guns or drugs, because it's illegal, but it's a billion-dollar industry. You know, and I'm saying that, just like the cases that we had before us, where you got eight policemen who's, you know, supposed to be making sure that guns and drugs is off the street, but what's happening? They putting guns and drugs on the street. And that's not just the only case. It's other cases that have happened here in Baltimore exactly the same way. You know, and I'm saying, so when you're talking about y'all burning the guns, where do y'all burn the guns at? I mean, which one of y'all city council people could tell me where they burned the guns at? Where did they destroy the drugs at? How often did they destroy the drugs? Nobody know.
And Mr. Gooden, I think we would all acknowledge up here that there's a lot of information we don't have, and that's the primary reason why the council president and the sponsor of the bill don't want to vote this out tonight, and why we are going to come back here for a more extensive hearing in which BPD provides us more detailed information in advance of the hearing, more than one day, in which we also have the Department of Finance and the Department of Law. It is...I believe everyone on the council, with all due respect, feels that it's unacceptable to have an agency tell us, when they're coming to testify in front of us, that we can't answer that, because it's another agency's responsibility. So we are going to make sure that we have those right agencies here, so that we can adequately answer those questions, and we hope that you'll join us again.
I will join you, sir, but let me just also say this.
And I have to ask that you wrap up.
Well, you took some of my three minutes.
Not really.
You know?
Not true, but...
Yeah, I don't know how much of you took. But in 1996, in 1996, President Jack Young was a council member. Oh, you wasn't here? Okay, I'm sorry. I know Ray...I know Eric Raisinger was.
Just like I took your time, right?
But the council...the council, the entire council voted on resolution. Then here's the council. Council's called CC282. Holden Inspector is the ones that introduced the council resolution, confiscated drugs and weapons incineration for the purpose of directing the police commissioner to prepare a plan to provide for public witnesses to the incineration of confiscated drugs and guns. So I'm saying, I have to say this. We've been talking about this for 20 years, man, and nothing have happened. You know, nothing. You know, so why do we have to be here 20 years later, and now we discussing the same thing? Let me say this. A resolution don't do us no good. We need to have a bill, you know, and no, no, I'm going to sit down. I got about two...
No, Mr. Gooden, you don't, and respectfully, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up in the next 15 seconds. And I will note that we do not have the authority on the city council to mandate that Baltimore Police Department do the things that you're saying, because technically Baltimore Police Department is a state agency. With that, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up. You are welcome.
But do y'all not hire the police? You know, is the police commissioner not hired by this here body?
The police commissioner is not hired by this here body.
Well, do y'all not confirm him?
We confirm him. He is appointed by the mayor. The mayor has the authority to name an acting commissioner. That does not have to be confirmed by the city council.
Right, but if he's appointed by the mayor, then he's working for the city.
Mr. Gooden, why don't we have a conversation after...I hope that you're going to continue to stay engaged on this subject. Councilman Scott is willing to speak with you after the hearing, but I have to move on to the next person that's...
I'm going to sit down, because y'all run this, but I'm going to say this. You know, I mean, we've been pushing this issue for 25, 30 years. Y'all expect me to come here in three minutes. You know what I'm saying? With all the evidence that we could give, you know, and we're going to just trust the police department. Now, I'm saying this to y'all. Hey, go on the internet, pull up the corruption in terms of police department here in Baltimore. You know what I'm saying? I'm saying, everybody here, man, we should be ashamed of ourselves to continue to allow this. And last, I'm going to conclude with this here. A portion of the money, that confiscate millions of dollars...oh, yeah, by the way, last year, they said they had one of the biggest drug busts went down at the pier. They took all these drugs out of container, which was worth millions of dollars. We don't know what happened.
Mr. Gooden, I'm going to have to...
I'm through. I'm going to sit down. I'm going to sit down with this. I just want to say this here.
Mr. Gooden, Mr. Gooden...
I am, sir. I'm getting ready to sit down with this. I just want to say one last thing.
Mr. Gooden, Mr. Gooden, I politely asked you to wrap up six times now.
I am. That's what I'm doing. You're saying you politely asked me to wrap up. I'm saying, I'm wrapping up, but you're interrupting me.
Mr. Gooden, I'm not going to ask you again. If you have additional testimony, you are welcomed.
Didn't you say to wrap up?
And encouraged to submit that in writing.
Didn't you say to wrap up?
I hope that you will continue to stay engaged on this issue. You have far exceeded the time that has been allotted to you out of a courtesy. I need to move on to the next person who's set to testify out of courtesy for that person's time.
I just want to close with one thing, and I'm done.
Please make it brief, Mr. Gooden.
A portion of the confiscated money should be earmarked to go directly back into the communities that they have hurt from taking the money. Now, why shouldn't that money go back to help to heal our communities, when y'all know we living in wounded communities?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gooden. Ralph Johnson?
Yes, sir. Is it possible that I could divert the rest of my time, Mr. Gooden?
No, sir.
I'd like to thank City Councilman Stokes for having his hearing, and in the wake of what's going on with the police department, the corruption, whatever happened to Detective Suda, it definitely needs to be transparency to regain public trust. But I'd just like to ask one particular question to the police department. The entire gun task force that's behind jail right now, being that guns are a problem, major problem in our city, were they replaced? Do we have anybody that replaced them?
So, sir, I have to ask you to address the council, not the police department.
Oh, I had asked you that.
If there's something that you would like us to ask the police department, we will make sure that they bring that information in the next hearing, but I have to, as a matter of process, you have to address your comments to the council, please, and thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So where the...I'm asking you, is it possible that you could ask them, where the officers from the gun task force that were indicted and behind bars right now, were they replaced? Because we really need people to go out there after the gun runners, to confiscate the guns, because that's the major resource of basically why we're having all the killings.
We will...yes, we will. After this, we will ask what unit has replaced the functionality of the gun trace task force. Yes, sir.
And one more question.
Yes, sir.
And basically, the guns that are confiscated, how were they able to be reintroduced back into society?
That question has already been answered, but we...
Was it answered? What was the answer?
Yes, sir.
What was the answer?
How have guns been reintroduced? Guns are either destroyed or...
No, I'm talking illegally. I apologize. How are they illegally reintroduced back to society? Because you have the same guns that's being confiscated ending up there pending off.
So...
True story.
Okay. So you're saying something different than what the police department is saying?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
We've asked the police department for documentation of their execution of their internal controls, which would either prove that they are correct or you are correct.
Yes, sir.
So unfortunately, at this time, we can't answer that question, but we will make sure that they provide us that information in advance of that next hearing.
Right.
So we can put any rumors to rest regarding that, sir.
And it probably would help if we have an annual audit instead of a four-year audit, because it's too much time in between. A six-month audit would be a blessing. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Nikki Justice? Did I say that right, ma'am?
It's Nikia Washington. Thank you for Nikki Justice. But thank you so much. I'm just so thankful to see all of the community here. Thank you so much for your time. What we're here to speak about is very important, which will be the incineration of the guns and the drugs, and there's so many things that are being confiscated by the police, and we actually have no answers at this point in time. We don't have any more information today that we had yesterday, and I think that is truly a shame and a disservice to the Baltimore city people, such as myself and Mr. Bill Gooden. And I'm so thankful for Mr. Bill Gooden for his 20 years of being very diligent in bringing this situation to the forefront, because we're not hearing any information on the guns. We have no information on the ballistics, and actually, you just proved to us that you have no reports as far as even what's in your locker room. So I think there are a lot more hands that are inside of the locker room than just three people that are responsible for what's going on. So what companies are you using to destroy these guns? And what types of guns? Because are there any reports of gun stores, or who's...where are these guns actually coming from, from the first place? And so if you are destroying the guns, if you're destroying...it sounds to me that there's actually a legal racket that's going on, and that Baltimore City Police is actually selling stolen merchandise. So what you're doing is you're approaching black people on the street, you're stealing anything, and then you're saying, oh, they're criminals, so we get to keep it, and then we can resell it. So you getting money on both sides. You getting paid from the city, then you harassing the entire city. You throwing them in jail. You creating bonds. You getting money, more money, and more money, and it sounds like all these millions of dollars is going right in your pocket. What bank is this money in? Okay, how many guns do you have in your locker room right now? Where the serial numbers? So when you come back with these reports, we want serial numbers. We want specifics for each year categorized. So when we come back, we don't want to hear, oh, I don't know. Oh, it's their problem, and that's unacceptable. You got black men bleeding in the middle of the street every single year. Y'all should be embarrassed that there's more than 300 people. How many homicides did you solve last year? I want y'all to kick the ballistics, B, C, P, and D, and Baltimore City, Mayor City Council. Every time we come here and ask y'all questions, y'all bobbing y'all heads up and down and looking at us like we slow. It's not me. Y'all making y'all self look. And apparently, Mary Pat Clark, you...how long you been on city council? Somebody needs to be embarrassed. Like, y'all don't get embarrassed? They talking about you across the globe. They got your name in their mouth across the whole entire globe, and they want to know what you doing. And then you blaming the people for murdering all these people when you see that it's the police that's creating crime? That's crazy. Y'all look silly right now. You got a whole entire gun squad on trial, and they're going to try to say it's the black men that's doing it? Somebody done lost their minds. And who is getting fired behind this? Which one is getting fired? Which one?
Ms. Washington, I have to ask you to wrap up, please. Thank you, ma'am. Diane?
Good evening to you, city council people.
Good evening.
I'm here too to testify, and I'm very disappointed, because I thought this meeting was to find a new way, after you confiscate the drugs and the weapons, a new way to destroy it and also have the public involved, because it's been going on too long. It's over 25 years. I started working for Housing Authority. It was in 87, and we came up with this, asking the same question. We asking to hear this, we in the 21st century, asking the same question. How are the drugs being destroyed? Why are they back on the street? Why are they back...and it's not just the people saying this. The FBI just showed us with the eight officers that they had just indicted. They showed where they had films of officers busting other people's houses down, then taking the drugs and confiscating the drugs and giving them to the people that work for them. That's unacceptable to the people that live here in Baltimore City. It should be unacceptable to everybody in the city council, because it makes it look bad on everybody, you know? And then we say it's 340-some people that died last year because of this, and it's like it's a never-ending...it's a revolving door, and it's got to stop at some time. And then when the people uprise, then everybody say it's a riot. But what makes people do that is because their voices are not being heard. Even here, tonight, people feel that their voices are not being heard. So once people get tired, even Dr. King said this, people, when they riot, it's because their voices are not being heard. And it's...I mean, it's...we're sick and tired. Baltimore City Police Department had the biggest budget, but our schools are suffering, and we want our children to be able to think right. That's not a child's thing. A child is in this place. It's us adults that are letting them down. We are letting them down, because we allowing this to continue to happen. The police state across the United States, that shouldn't be. We should be working hand in hand, and we are not working hand in hand at all. It's like a pony show. We want to know when the drugs going to be...when they going to be fired up, what company, and how much we are spending for that company to destroy the weapons and stuff. We also want to be able to be there, some citizens that...we are law-abiding citizens. Everybody is not a criminal that's here, and everybody out there are not criminals. We should be able to be able to go and witness the drugs and guns being melted down, wherever it should be. We asked at the time, it was when Bethlehem Steel was still open, we asked for the weapons and stuff to be right there, to destroy right there, and have people, the citizens of Baltimore City, to witness that, and it didn't happen. And here we in the 21st century talking about the same thing. Who's held accountability? Just, you know, that's what that, you know, the recommendation was, but to me, I feel that the police department should have been in receivership, because it's not working, and it's making us look bad all over.
Monday afternoon. Thank you, ma'am. That was all that we had signed up from the public to testify. Is there anyone else that wanted to testify? Is there anyone else that wanted to testify?
What's happening?
Friday afternoon, January the 19th. What's your na- please state your name, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. My name is Val Jenkins. I'm the founder of Hug Don't Shoot. Everyone here had some awesome questions, and they asked most of my questions. But I'm so confused. With all the crime in Baltimore City, why all this seems so new to y'all? Why do this seem so new? And why are these officers here with no paperwork? Did they not know, was they called like an hour ago to say, did they have to have this trial or come to City Hall? Because I'm confused. Everyone seemed so confused, like this is the first time this is happening. I'm, I'm tired. I, I want to go home to my family after work. I have to go out in these streets and give hugs to these families for these victims. How could y'all not be tired? How could y'all sit here and pretend y'all don't know what's going on? These murders are not new. There's no way in the world you could say, oh, my God, these guns are not being put back in the streets? Yes, they being put back on the streets. We all know that. How could y'all not know that? Most of these people up here is on my Facebook page. It's all down my timeline. You got people on Facebook Live smoking weed, showing guns. The evidence is here. People are not getting respect because you're not giving respect. I am tired. You have all these amazing organizations out here, an audit every four years? What? How you gonna have an audit every four years? With 343 murders? With all these officers is going to jail for murder? Oops, did I say that? It's unbelievable that everyone is sitting here looking so dumbfounded, no disrespect to y'all. But I'm tired, the city is tired. I am so embarrassed to hear that Baltimore is the murder capital. I am so embarrassed to hear Baltimore schools are cold. I'm so embarrassed to hear Baltimore is number one in bedbugs. I'm so embarrassed to hear Baltimore crime for stolen vehicles. How are y'all not being tired? Y'all living in the city? I'm a county girl, working in the city for free. And if the audit is going for every four years, give Hug Don't Shoot that money, because I am broke, because I'm giving the city my money. Somebody gotta give us some answers. Someone have to give us some answers. And again, no disrespect to no one in the panel, but we want to work together. Most of these people up here has helped me personally with my organization, and I thank y'all. But as one, y'all gotta do better. I am so tired of hearing people down City Hall. I'm so tired of people hating down the mayor and the police department. But if you're sitting at City Hall, and you know your colleague is doing wrong, you're guilty too. If you're a police officer and know that the guy in your car is doing wrong, you're guilty too. I am not that person who's against police. I have a ton of police officers that's my friends, and I see them out there working. But I'm also that girl who a police caught me personally as a child on my father's phone and told my father that he was about to raid his house. So that incident will be in my mind the rest of my life. So we have to do something. I've been to these meetings, I've been to the school board meetings, and everyone's sitting there like, how are we supposed to answer this?
Ms. Jenkins, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Can you wrap up and come out and go out in the cold and hug with me?
I don't know how I was overlooked.
What's your name, sir?
Leon Purnell.
Because you didn't check the box that says testify. It's okay.
Yeah, I thought I did. I'm, I want to say that, that I'm, I'm very disappointed. You know, when you schedule a hearing on an item, and you know that these questions are gonna come up, there should be documentation to support whatever you have to say. Audits in this city is pathetic. All of you getting paid, you getting a new raise, are you deserving of it? See, that's something that should come to everybody's mind when you listen to the frustration that's in this hearing room. We don't get paid to come down here. I don't even like coming down here. And you, you want to limit people to three minutes, but we have to stay here for an hour and something and listen to comments from you all that should wait until we finish. The audits that, that supposed to be done, then why, how do you have that much money? And it's supposed to be used for public safety? I, I would like you to think about something. When we have victims that come to our center, and they need funds to get shelter somewhere so they'll be safe, I would definitely say that that's public safety. You got millions of dollars sitting in the bank, don't even know what, where you don't, I don't even know if it's in the bank. Because I, if I haven't seen it and, and see proof of it, I'm, I'm not one that, that takes it for granted, because I haven't seen what happened in this city. There are funds that just vanish for some reason. So I, I want you to know in closing that it is a shame that we have to come down here, waste our time, because we brought it to your attention several times, and it still wasn't addressed. Then when we come down here to a hearing, we still don't get anything, but do, do you know about that? Do you know about that? That, that's embarrassing. That is embarrassing. And if, if they have money in the bank, they should have brought a bank statement and showed me that that million dollars is in the bank. Seriously, you know, it's, it's pathetic. And, you know, and some of you ran for office, and I supported a lot of you, because you looked like you was gonna bring back change and, and newness. But this is the same old bull.
Thank you, Mr. Purnell. This is the last person who we're gonna take public testimony from?
Peace and blessings, everyone.
All right, hold on, folks. Let's pause for a second. There's a sign-in sheet here that has a testify checkbox on it. Everyone is asked to sign that at the beginning if you plan to testify. He did not. He did not. I have called out, hold on, folks. Folks? Folks? Sir? Sir, you're out of order. Okay? Everyone, Mr. Crawley, sit down, please. Everyone who signed up to testify has been- Now, we're gonna, we're gonna pause for a minute, okay? We're gonna go into recess for one minute. Folks who have not yet testified yet are gonna sign into this sheet. We will go back into session in one minute. If your name is on this sheet, you will be called to testify. When we have gone through everyone who has not yet testified, we will then conclude the hearing. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, we are now in recess. Going back into session right now. Folks, if you could please grab your seats. Folks, if you could please grab your seats. Thank you very much for your patience this evening. We have two people in addition to those that have signed up to testify. Who's this? This guy right here? Steve? One is Steve Semoris. And one is Laverne Kason. Is there anyone else that did not sign this sheet? Is there a reason why you didn't sign the sheet? Got it. I'm gonna get it to you right now. Is there anyone else in addition to this gentleman? Going once? Going twice? Those are the last two people. Sir, please take it away. You have three minutes.
My name is Steve Semoris, and I'd like to say to all the questions that have arise out of this, I can tell you that we have one of two, or maybe both. We have incompetent negligent criminals, or we have competent crook, irresponsible crooks. I don't know which one fits, but whichever one fits, wear it. It doesn't seem that, it, it, it seems that nothing works in Baltimore City. The police doesn't work, the schools don't work, the water department don't work. I see you, ma'am, having you stressed out.
I'm not stressed, I'm discouraged to hear you say that.
Yeah. Yeah, and nothing works, except parking ticketing. Parking ticketing works perfect. You get a ticket before you even get out of your car. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Laverne Kason.
Good evening. I wanted to mention that Baltimore City, we have some good cops and we have some bad cops. But the bad ones is overshadowing the good cops. And the whole system, the whole justice system is not an even playing field when it comes to people of color. You have mass incarceration that's going on, and the only, the only people that I see that is going to jail is people of color. It seems like when it comes to, when it comes to a white kid and a black kid, they get a free pass, and it might be the same kind of charge, but the black kid or people of color is gonna get the most time. That system, that whole system needs to be changed. And also, I know, I don't understand why the, there is a drug-free zone only in the inner city, as if the county is not doing drugs. That sounds crazy. You just have it in the black inner cities. That seems kind of awkward to me. Also, I remember they was doing an investigation. I hate to really bring up race, but race is a main factor in some of the stuff that's going on right now, especially when it comes to justice. They did an investigation, uh, with the FBI did an investigation, I guess, with Internal Affairs of the Police Department, far as KKK involvement. I never heard of a response to that investigation. So is it possible somebody could tell us whatever happened about that investigation? It's like it just fell off, haven't heard nothing. And in order for things to get better, it has to be a, a even playing field, and the corrupt cops need to get off the force. So I'm just trying to see what, you know, can y'all answer some of my questions if possible? Nothing about the investigation, nothing about the drug-free zones.
So there's, there's drug-free school zones in the county. They're in several municipalities. The council does not have information on criminal proceedings. There is a venue to look that information up. This is not that venue.
Wait a minute, excuse me, you said drug-free zones in the county? You talking about the schools? I'm talking about corners, people's neighborhood. That's what I'm talking about.
Ma'am, I'm not sure what you're referring to, and this committee does not have information on the proceedings in a criminal investigation. I'm sorry.
Uh, nothing about the FBI investigation of the police.
Ma'am, let me reiterate.
Okay.
This committee does not have information-
Okay, I'm, I'm done. I brought up the issues. If you don't want to answer, that's fine. Thank you.
There's not an answer to be given, ma'am.
Why, why isn't it?
Because it's an FBI investigation. Why would a city council-
Wasn't that done, wasn't that over with and done? I'm just trying to see what the results was.
Ma'am, I don't know. There, there is a venue to, to get that information. This is not the venue for that.
Okay. And you can't ask, you can't ask about the drug-free zones in the inner cities either.
Ma'am, it's not a city council investigation, it's the FBI.
I'm just asking you simple questions that I thought you'd be able to answer.
And I'm giving you a simple answer.
Okay, thank you.
We are not, we don't work for the FBI.
Thanks, thanks for y'all, thanks, hearing what I'm saying.
Rajad Stanton.
Peace and blessings, everyone. How you all doing today? All right. Thank you, sister. Wow. First, I would like to commend everyone that's in here, both the citizens and our elected officials. I'm not here to enunciate the same rhetoric, not asking you all to go outside of your own jurisdictional oversight as a committee. I'm solely here to make a recommendation that can solely go into your resolutions and to hold you all accountable as public servants. I've served on a committee and a task force that most of you all are aware of. That's very solution-oriented and addressing one particular issue, and that is the dirt bike culture in Baltimore City. I ask that once we get the numbers at the next hearing, the actual confiscation numbers, the processes of what are they doing as far as dispositioning, allocating, or moving those monies to a third-party entity that wants the funding, and it is properly audited, that that money can then be reallocated into programming, as City Council President Jack Young said, into programming that is solely focused in youth and court cultural programmings that deal with an advantageous approach and solution to the dirt bike culture. We understand that the Dirt Bike Task Force is solely out there to propagandize and criminalize a certain population within our city. We ask if this money has to be going towards the redirection of public safety, that we invest it in the development of our young people in the programming that is culturally competent and accessible. And if you need the listing of these organizations that teaches STEM education with the interest of dirt bike culture in Baltimore City, I can give you a list of those. I am here to make sure that this goes on public record and to hold every single one of you all accountable, and to let our law enforcement knows that they have other avenues of prevention intervention rather than incarceration of our young black boys and girls in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. BPD, we are going to be meeting next week to discuss expectations for the next hearing on this. We will be calling a follow-up hearing on this within the next four weeks. We will meet next Friday. I hope that everyone will continue to participate in the dialogue. With that, we are not voting this out. We are going into recess, and a new hearing will be scheduled soon. Thank you. Please be sure to check underneath your seats for any belongings that you may have brought.